Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's Work Session for March 7th, 2022. If you will, please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. God, we thank you for your many, many blessings. We thank you for the school system, and we pray that you will continue to lead and guide us, continue to bless us, bless our students and our staff, and God, continue to give us guidance. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, citizens address the board. Nobody. All right, number four, approval of the work session agenda. There are agenda items before us. We have a motion.
Motion.
Ooh, Ty.
Oh, he can have.
Motion by Mr. MacIver, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor?
Ah.
Okay. Motion carries five zero. All right, Dr. Pulis.
All right. Obviously, no citizens to address the board.
Mm-mm.
Goal area one, student success. Let's pull up the graduation rate, if you will, please. This is, as you know, we track this stuff, and, you know, with every student that comes and goes, and whether they pass a course or slide back behind. So, as it stands right now, we have sixty-two of our students on track. That's eighty-five percent at graduation rate if we were to graduate today. We have three students, you'll see them highlighted there. We have students with disabilities that take the alternative test, and unfortunately, they also, when they graduate, they don't count as a full graduate for us. So, automatically, those three count against us. Now, if their plan extends, let's say they're supposed to be able to finish everything this year, and they can't, they can be pushed to the next year, and then possibly up until the part where they're twenty-two years of age. So, I tell you that only because this is a large group. They hit us this year, three. And so, three against seventy-three total graduates is a pretty high percentage. And then, we have eight students that we're still tracking that are still missing some work, but you have six of those that are one section behind. So, Blanc has helped us significantly. You have one that has three sections. So, my expectation at this point would be that we'll be somewhere between ninety-three and ninety-five percent graduation rate, which, you know, our goal's always been to be above ninety. So, we're still tracking. Barring any questions on that, we can move to the next area. Winter intercession, just wanted to let everybody know, you know, when we moved to the fall and winter breaks, we, one of the requirements that I placed on the school was to make sure that we had an intercession. And so, we had kids come in during that period of time for two to three days, and it was structured. I'd like to commend the middle school. They had over forty students come in and worked during those days and did a fabulous job. And this is about catching up and also accelerating and preparing these kids for success. And so, with, with everything that's taking place with COVID, the learning loss is significant across the board, and we're trying to make sure we catch up, is a, is a good word. So, intercessions at all three schools were successful, and we're going to continue with that trend. And, you know, that and after-school programs, some Saturday school programs and summer school, trying to do everything that, that we can think of to, to get our kids back up and to the level they're supposed to be at. So, again, I commend all the schools for doing a great job, but the middle school did an exceptional job of, of getting the kids in there this particular round. Any questions on intercession? Item three is just to remind everybody, next week, we're going to recognize the MCA Skills USA team, the one-off state competition did a fabulous job. We want all of them to come in and, and be recognized in front of the board. And some of them have specific, great accomplishments as well that we want to make sure we recognize. So, that's just a reminder. There'll be some photos, so be prepared for that.
Excuse me, Dr. Pulis. Could we also recognize the DAR winners?
Yeah, absolutely.
For their, I, I saw it in the paper, but the, the DAR gets in the...
You have those names, don't you? Yep, yep. We can pull them in, see if they can come next week.
I was sorry I missed their...
All right.
I didn't get it.
Goal area two, organizational effectiveness. The FY 2021 audit results, Ms. Brigman and Ms. Franklin and I sat through the, I call it an outbrief, but it's the, the final results of the audit. They looked at everything from the last fiscal year, and no findings. I mean, it was a clean audit, and so, I commend Ms. Franklin. She does a great job with that. And so, you know, I, I've been talking about not knowing what they could come up with because of the concerns over an approved budget versus the auditors. This round, you know, absolutely fantastic results. Couple areas they've asked us to look at. One is on our IT policies that we're going to have to start working on, and specifically with, with the movement towards the more online schooling, as well as the potential for hackers, that we've got to put some things in place. And so, I will tell you ahead of time, I'd like to ask for, in executive session, have a conversation about cybersecurity. It's one of the new things that's allowed under the, under the new law, there's cybersecurity. So, again, I commend Tammy. Just, she does a great job, and, you know, the, the results of which were very evident. One of the comments that was made by the senior auditor was, "It's great to be able to have such a clean audit, to have a discussion like that," while she's simultaneously working on another school district that has numerous challenges. So, thank you. Anything else you'd like to say on that?
We're about covered it.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy.
Yep.
There was very, all positive that they had to say. There was nothing negative, so...
But is everybody in the district doing what they're supposed to do? I mean, it's not just me, you know? Everybody following the procedures, you know, is what helps us to have an audit.
Awesome. And, and I know you all have heard this saying, but, you know, with good to great, Jim Collins, I mean, his comment is putting the right people in the right seats on the bus. And we've got a great thing going on. We've got great people in the right seats. And so, I appreciate the work of everyone. The next area on here is a purchase of a new bus. As you know, I've asked you about purchasing these. Our bus fleet is, is dying. We had a, I call it a micro bus. It's a smaller version, but it was going to cost us in excess of $10,000 to get fixed. There was a bus available for us, and so, with the funds that we're able to, to put together for the end of the year, purchasing that when we could is an important move. So, that bus has arrived. We have a picture of it. Shiny McIntosh County Schools with a twenty-two fifteen. That holds up to thirty passengers, I believe. And so, again, air-conditioned, and our kids deserve it, and that's going to help us out with a lot of different, different activities, so.
And this is, is this going on a route, or?
It'll be on a route. It'll be used for athletics. I mean, it's, it's available to us. And so, what's, what's good about this size bus is, you know, obviously, we have some routes that are very small, that have a challenge of getting in and out of different locations. When you take that full-size bus and try to wrap it around some of these tight places,
Oh, yeah.
It gets very precarious. This one can get in and out, and then also, you can easily carry, you know, a volleyball team, an entire team, and a, you know, a basketball team, et cetera, on these and, and make our route. So, it's, it's a good purchase for us.
Since we're on buses,
Yes, sir.
Have we had success with the, the buses we got from Glen County?
Well, most of the buses we've had from Glen County are very old. You know, we purchase them for not a lot of money. We've kept them in our fleet going, and then when they started to die off, we cannibalize them for other ones. But, you know, they have some more that are available,
That's why I was asking.
And we're looking to pick up a couple more. And so,
Okay.
I do think that the, they're cost-effective for us and what we use them for.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, we're, we're looking at that right now, and, and we've, we've been in discussions with them. I'd like to pick them up before somebody else does.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna, I was getting to. If, if we had success with them, you know, we could talk to Bob Spence and pick up some more.
It's interesting to look at the, the fleet and what they end up having to surplus versus what we have. And so, it'd be a good move for us if we can get them. The next area here is CARES Act Three. And, and the reason I put this on here is that part of the new federal guidelines, and I told you, they, they wrote this as they go. I mean, so it's, it's, changes all the time. But, the CARES Act, which is the, what's the actual name for it? SRO or?
SRO three R.
Yeah, there you go. That name. So, I'll call it CARES Act Three. So, that's the big amount of money that we received. And there were some strings to it. Even though they said, "We're flexible" and all that, as it kept going, they started putting more and more requirements on there, and one of which was every six months, we're supposed to be able to say to the public, "Here's where we're at, with what we spent it on," you know, get input from them. We've, we're prepared a survey. Survey results, we're matching exactly what we did with the money anyway, but we'll send another survey out and expect that the remaining, that's what, about $2 million, that, you know, what we think it needs to be done, get their, get their feedback back on it, and then we'll go from there. So, I tell you all that because this is really a, it's a process in motion at all times. Tammy, anything else that I need to say about that? Okay. All right. Item four, Georgia Fund One transfer. If you recall, last month, we talked about the necessity to move money out of Southeastern Bank, and I asked the board to approve around $600,000, I believe was the terminology. Well, by the time we were able to set up the account, because it was very arduous to set it up, from the time that we started it until completed, probably it was about two weeks. And that same timeframe, our next deposit came in for East Plus. So, the dollar amount that you see there is the actual dollar amount that we transferred to the Georgia Fund One account. So, where I said originally it was going to be around $600, we added that extra money, which was a little over $100,000, and that's where we stand. So, any questions on any of that? I, I would ask that next week, we just vote on it again, is just a, so that we cover our bases on that for auditing purposes.
What kind of interest are we drawing?
Can't tell you yet, because it's such an arduous thing. But I, but I will tell you this, that we did move $2 million into the money market account, and in the twenty days that we've had it, we made over $200 bucks. And, and, and we've got $3 million in some of these other accounts, and I think we made $5.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a, it's a huge difference, huge. But we don't know yet what's, what we're going to get out of that until now that they now have everything, and then we'll get a report on it probably next month. Okay. These are just a couple reminders, and I've asked to have them listed here so that we make it known to the public. But the board retreat, we've scheduled that for April 28th. That's at Spartina Grill in the upstairs area, from nine to 12:00. And, you know, that's the time we go through the budget again, and we go through all the processes. And we'll talk a little bit about our strategic plan and where we stand on that. But that's, that was a success last year, holding it over there. We'll do it again. We'll have lunch, spend as much time as needed to go through that. As well, the requirement for three hours of whole-board training every year. We're looking to do that on the 22nd at Spartina Grill. Phil Hartley's going to come down and talk about the new legislations that have been approved, as well as talk a lot about, about some of the, the more recent incidences and more recent updates on transgenders and bathrooms and all the things that are transpiring with that. We're going to split that with Glen County. Their board's going to come over like we went over to them last year, and we'll have lunch at Spartina.
So, that will be an afternoon deal?
It's nine to 12:00.
Okay. And that's April, the what?
That's, well, the first one's April 28th,
Yeah.
And that's, that's the board retreat.
Yeah.
And that's from nine to 12:00.
Okay.
And then the second one is whole-board training. That's June the 22nd, and that's from nine to 12:00. And although it's not on here, it's just a reminder that typically, we do a senior picnic. We'll need to talk about that, but that's usually the day of rehearsal. So, graduation's the third of June, so that would mean the second of June, we'd organize and do a, a senior picnic. Ms. Brigman, do you want to talk about the delegates?
Um, yeah, I'll, yes. I'll talk about it real quickly. If, you know, every year, when we go to GSBA, we choose a delegate and an alternate. So, next week, if you would like to nominate yourself or someone, we'll need one of each, and that, the alternates just in case the delegate, for some reason, cannot make it. And I need to submit those before the 18th, so we can vote on that next week. You're welcome to nominate yourself.
You're smiling.
Or another board member.
The only thing I'm saying is I've already done it.
Yeah.
I think we've all kind of done it.
Really?
Maybe.
I know I've done it several times, Fred.
Oh.
There we go. I would defer that opportunity.
Well, you'll have a week to think about it, and then if nobody chooses, then I'll pick someone.
There you go.
I'll nominate someone. But anyway, it, it's not grueling. It's not, you just go and, of course, they'll send you all, everything. You know, the packet is sent to you. You have plenty of time to go over it, and you just go in and we'll vote, either send it up to legislation or not. So, it's not, they don't draw blood or anything.
Okay. You good?
Yep.
All right. Item ten, discussion of February 22 financial report. I'm sorry. Let me, let me jump back. Item number eight. Item number eight is, just again, a reminder, GSBA Summer Conference. That's the other part where we get the board training that goes on. So, that's scheduled for the 9th through the 11th. We would arrive on the 8th, if I remember right, the Wednesday, the 8th. That morning, everything goes on, and then Saturday's the culmination of the event. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go, as far as setting up reservations and, and dinner arrangements and things of that nature.
Yeah. Registration will come up, and I believe it's around the same time the delegates are due. I'll look at that date once again. I did look it up and put it in my calendar for a reminder. But I'll get you this week, the three offerings for the pre-workshop conferences, and like, you know, see which one you want. And that way, we'll have everything together so when registration opens up, because you know it's a race to the finish to get those done and get in there on time.
It's pretty well certain we're not, you're not going to the Indigo, is that right?
Well, I'm fine with the Indigo. I mean, Fred's the only one that had an issue with that.
Well, it was right outside my window, however.
Flip right.
Remember what happened, so.
But anyway, I'll get those choices to you this week, and we'll select those.
Okay. All right. The next item up here, discussion of the minutes from previous. If you'll just take a look at those, if you find anything that needs to be added, deleted, changed, whatever, please bring that to attention to myself or Ms. Lane. At this point, we can talk about our February 22 financial reports. And Ms. Franklin, can you go through those for us, please?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
On page one, the general operating account. We began the month of February with 5.9 million. We have receipts of 1.3 million and dispersments of 4.2 million, leaving us with a balance of 2.99 million. Within those dispersments was the transfer to the, of a million dollars to the local projects account and the $2 million transfer to the money market account. Revenues on page 27. Okay, we have period-to-date revenues of 11.1 million. If, you'll notice that I took the $2 million transfer out to, because that's, we have the transfers within the general fund. It skews our percentages, so I backed that out and recalculated the percentage. The taxes, 7.4 million. We have through February received 6.7 million in property taxes that are included in that number, which is 85.5% of the net levy of 7.4 million. And we have received 96.6% of the total budget for these property tax revenues. We're in really good shape with, what, six months to go for receipts. There are no questions.
Can we collect right up through August, correct?
Right, we collect through August and record in this fiscal year. So, we have, our receipts are at 75% of our budget and 14.7 million. There are no questions on that. We'll move on to expenditures on page 29. And again, I backed out the $2 million and recalculated the percentage. We have expended 8.8 million, which is 59% of our budget and 14.8 million of expenditures for the general fund. And finally, the general fund fund balance on page 34 is at 4.66 million, 4.67 million. School nutrition, page 112. We began the month with just over $125,000, and we have receipts of $93,000, dispersments of $76,000, leaving us with $148,000 in the school nutrition account. Page 120, the money market account. The transfer in of the $2 million, and as you can see, the February interest for those few weeks was $219.
Amazing.
Leaving us with just... Page 122, the local projects account. We began the month with just over a million, and we transferred in a million. We did have a payment of $4,000 for painting at MCA and leaving us with just over $2 million in the local projects account. Page 124 is the East Plus Projects Account, $189. Page 126 is the debt service account. We began the month with 500, just over $570,000. We did have that East Plus receipt post of $135,571. Those receipts are up 23, over 23% from February of last year. And we transferred out the total balance of $706,063.11 that went into the Georgia One Fund.
And we have that set up to have all future East Plus money go directly to this account. So, it'll, it'll be an automatic deposit going into it.
Yes, moving forward. And finally, the Georgia One Fund is the $706,063.11.11.
I would like to make note that I had discussions today about purchasing fuel for the buses with gas prices, and so, we were able to purchase fuel, fill up our tank. It's around $4 for diesel. I mean, what we pay for it, it's much higher out on the market. So, but we have tapped up 7,500 gallons of, of gas right now. Should make that through the rest of the year and pray that we don't have a huge increase thereafter. Okay? Anything else, Ms. Franklin?
I don't have no questions.
All right. If, if none, let's have Mr. Masah come up. Let's talk about facilities and where we're at on a few things.
Great evening, board. It's a pleasure to come before you tonight to talk on my points here. I'm going to start off with the electric bill summary. If you'll take a look at this, there's some really positive news here in our electric bill. If you notice at the very bottom, we're going to skip down to the system totals, and you'll see over the 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 years, you'll see that we've had a significant decrease in our electricity bill. That's around $100,000 in decrease from 17. I just want to remind you that in 2016, we had our ABM signing. It was probably 2017 before the work was completed. And then in 2019, Dr. Pulis joined us, and he challenged the department to see what we could do and decrease that bill by at least 10%. And we exceeded that. And we went through every system that we had, every hot water heater, every light, every electrical use that we had, and we shut things off, and we scheduled things just right. And you can see a, a huge decrease in our electricity bill, not only because of, and I wouldn't say not only, not because of our ABM contributions, it was more because of what we did in the system. Dr. Pulis, like I said, challenged us, and we scheduled everything in a different way than we've been doing in the past. Every break, all the AC units are turned off. Every time we turn around, Dr. Pulis is asking and checking on this. Every month, a bill is entered into our spreadsheet, and he's looking at it with us and, and making the questions that need to be asked. And you can see that it's paying off in a big way. We've had some great decreases. You'll notice that the high school, that was one of our biggest deductions there. If you look from 17 to 21, we've had a huge, and that was a, a lighting situation. We had lights on there. Even though you drive by, it looks like it's lit up. Those are emergency lights in there now. And we did the due diligence, and you can see that it's paying off. The challenge was accepted, and I think that we've hit the mark on that.
Question.
Yes.
And like you said, this is some of what the system decided to do. Have we discussed any of this with ABM? Because, of course, they had already projected something that we haven't yet to see.
We actually have a meeting.
So, what is the conversation?
We have a meeting set up with them next week. And the way that that document was established, Mr. MacIver, was a projected savings based on changing this light bulb to this type of light bulb. And that was a, they factored that and said, "This is what it should save you." And of course, that updating of transition from this type of lighting to that and this air conditioner, that took place mostly during the times that you see. We, we dropped 30,000. But most of the savings occurred after we started shutting things off and, and making sure our air conditioners were in sync. Now, they're new air conditioners. So, I mean, those obviously are more efficient, but the efficiency, they're going to come and tell us, because that's what they did last year. "We saved you $207,000." I, I, I can't see that. I, I can't see it. I, you know, I've continued to say, those savings that we're seeing with dollar for dollar are based on mitigating factors that we have put in place. Their savings based on the document that was signed and agreed to is, "We changed out X number of light bulbs, and that saved you this much if you'd have had the regular light bulbs."
Okay.
I, I wish I could tell you differently, but that's kind of the agreement and how it was laid out.
Again, it's a constant review of every bill that comes in, and specifically looking at what's happening in this building. We're quite, we're reviewing that and making our adjustments on, on a bill-by-bill basis, and it, it's proven to work out.
We, we've shut off quite a few hot water heaters, for example, that just continuously heat, heat, and heat. And, and portables that had hookups that were charging $25 and $30. Doesn't seem like a lot, but you get rid of 10 portables, that adds up every month. And so, there's a lot. Now, probably, again, you see the high schools, the biggest change, leaving those lights on, because they were, they were basically walking out the door. And those, that's, that's a huge number to change this for the high school alone.
And the next agenda, Oak Grove improvements. If you've had a chance to tour Oak Grove, you'll see that there's been some major work done. It's looking so good. I, I really love the way that they've taken the walls out and made one big giant room in the, the very back, and all the rooms that are in front of it that are cleaned out and ready for painting. Paint has been ordered. That's next on the step. But I want you to just think to ourselves, if you know that building at all, and you're standing in that very back room. It, the door that goes out to that room faces the football field. And what the plan is to have some storefront doors there, that what you'll be looking out upon is the beautiful football field, the stands, everything that was there. There used to be an old air conditioning unit. If you remember, the old scoreboard was there. It was cluttered. But if you were to drive by there now, it's just a beautiful wall that will be painted with some glass doors. It's going to be a, a real vision to be in that building, doing your thing, and looking out upon the grounds that are, are going to be so nice. Around all the building, if you had gone around the side of it, there was an old covering that covered up pipes and all sorts of plumbing, all gone, clean-cut, and safe and beautiful. That building's going to turn out to be a gem for us, the, the end that we keep. And it's, it's really coming along. Swing by, take a look. The landscaping is already coming along. We've taken some trees out. It's really going to be a great project. Our partnership with the Girls and Boys Club is strong. They've stepped up to the plate. They've done their homework and gotten the funding and fundraised up, and it's going to behoove us all. And then we, at the end of it, we'll still have extra rooms for some projects that are exciting to think about in the future.
Just to hit on something that Mr. Masah just said, that, so that everybody's clear. Boys and Girls Club is paying for the painting, the labor in the painting, $50,000, and then the, the door front that they talked about, they're paying up to $10,000. So, we're not paying for that. That's truly on them. We're, our folks are doing some labor, okay? And then, there's some few things that need to be done regardless, but by far, this is being funded by them.
For the first time, I can say that the schedule hasn't changed. March eighteenth through the twenty-firth, we'll start, um, the mobilization and staging of equipment, that's right, right, right around the corner, that we should see, um, solar panels, um, on the ground and getting ready for that project to, um, get started and, and get finished, so we're on, on track, no, no changes, everything's in, in order for that. I'm really excited about the solar project.
I, I will add to that solar project. We've talked a lot about electricity now, that Georgia Power came out to do an assessment of our lighting at the, uh, at the stadium, and so, you know, we paid probably, what, excess of fifteen thousand dollars when, at first month I got here, because we had multiple lights out. We had to go to North Georgia to get anybody to change those things. So I know that we're looking to see what it's gonna take long-term. Georgia Power's gonna come back to us with some ideas for LED lighting. Um, we'll come back to Board and let everybody know what we're looking at.
Mr. Masah, did we ever come up with where are we gonna, where are they gonna put the solar panels at high school?
Um, re- remembering that we're, the, no project at the high school at this time, because of the new roof coming on there, we're holding off on that, because we know we'll be tearing that roof off, and, um, we've scaled it down to just the middle school and the high.
Didn't recall that we ever discussed that, but thank you.
We, at one point, we were discussing a, a solar field.
Field.
But, um, right now, we just took a break, break on that, and then we'll be able to have a, a good judgment of how this is working, and if we wanna expand in the future, they're willing, um, we c- we can do that, but just focused on the roofs that we, um, we know are, are ready to go.
As well as Georgia Power handles both Todd Grant and the middle school, and Coastal handles the high school, so it kinda just cleaned it up until we know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna really be able to get a, a good e- estimate of how this is working before we have to go all-in, all-in. So the next is Todd Grant Kitchen Air Conditioning Unit Update. Well, here's the situation. Um, Dr. Pulis, in his, um, wise judgment, said that we needed to have that air conditioning really evaluated, and we had a company come out and spend a lot of time with it, and, um, come to find out, there were some issues with the AC, but the biggest issue and was shocking i- in the design was that the thermostat was in the office, so if you can imagine an office, a small office door closed, the thermostat in there reading that office, and the whole kitchen out there, um, not even being read from that. So there was, um, s- some issues with that. We're moving the thermostat, obviously, the AC right now is working. There was some also, some issues with the fan, the vent fan that pulls up, it wasn't working properly. So we're in the process of, um, reevaluating. We're gonna see if that AC really can keep up before we make that, um, significant investment. I think it was eighty thousand dollars for a return air unit at the top, and it's possible that we still might have to do that, because it is gonna draw in some hot air, but before we do that, we're going to explore how our system works under the ideal conditions, with a thermostat in the right spot, the, um, vent working in the right way, and the air pumping out the way it should, so, um, again, the small investment in having it checked out, um, by some people with a little more, um, experience was well worth it, and I think that we're i- in, in line to be surprised when it, it comes down. Now's the time that we're starting. I know next week's gonna be cold, but this week it's starting to heat up, and they're starting to feel it, so we'll see how that AC unit keeps up, but man, a small thermostat placed wrong caused a lot of, um, heartache and, um, heat for those, those people for a while, but, but we're glad to have that, um, worked out. Baseball field project. Um, we're, we're still working on the baseball field. Of course, everything is up and running for that baseball field for games and everything, but because of supply chain and some issues, that we're still waiting on some of the, um, windscreen to come in, 'cause we wanna even make it better. All windscreen down the, um, baselines all the way around, and some, um, windscreen in, in the back, so we, we've got a little more windscreen to do. We have the gates, we're gonna close off the back of that batting cage, so it's gonna be secure and be a, a, a really, um, secure place that we can trust to have our pitching machines, all the things in there, new lighting in the batting cage, and, um, in addition, you can see at the middle school, we've built a beautiful pump house over the pump a- at the end of the field. We're gonna, um, mimic that at the high school and cover that pump house and make it look good for the baseball team. The baseball field is gorgeous. We have a great facility, and all these little improvements, it's even getting better. If you could take a look at our, um, our batters, our pitchers dug out there, the pitchers mound, it, that's fenced off, beautiful wood around it, um, it's really come around really nice, and it's even gonna get better. We did have, um, a bleacher inspection this year, if you ever may have heard, that, um, we had a little bleacher issue, but it wasn't because it wasn't inspected. We have a welder coming out, and we're, um, even making them a little tighter than that, so bleachers are, are looking good, and we'll be in, um, a hundred percent full repair by the end of the week.
Okay. You got one more there.
Pond project, oh gosh, if you've, um, had a chance to take a look, what a difference that pond area has been made. The slope has been changed drastically, it's, um, probably at least, I would say fifteen or twenty feet deeper than it was, it was a four-foot deep pond. If you remember, you could walk across it, and there will be no way to walk across it at this point. Um, the slope is coming along, we have a beautiful drainage that goes from the field all the way out, we're gonna have, um, what they call rip rap that goes at the end of the drainage pipe, so that it will never wash out, and, and doing it right, and I'm really proud of that, um, project, the way it's been coming along, and you'll see that, um, it's gonna be an area that we can be proud of, and not just a retention pond. The pump is on order, y- again, um, we're just waiting on them, it's, uh, we're ahead of the game, so it should be here hopefully before the, um, project is even complete, the, and the grass is grown, we'll have that pump in there, we're just waiting for water to, a good rain and some more water. It's filling up, it's probably a quarter of the way full already, we're just seeping up from the bottom, so it's coming along a- in, in a beautiful way. For grass, we've got a couple options there, we've looked at San Antonio, we've looked at Bahia, and we've also are exploring hydro turf, or hydro seed sprayed in, you see it done on these highways, and, um, really gets it in there, and, um, so we're gonna have that nice, and again, Dr. Pulis has challenged us to have that ready by graduation, and we're gonna rise to the, the challenge and have, um, a beautiful fountain, LED lights, an, an area that we can be proud of, and, um...
We want a, we want a pirate ship in there too, if anybody has a pirate ship. Buccaneer. Buccaneer ship, excuse me, excuse me.
Mr. Masah, if I could get you to touch on the middle school kitchen project on D?
Yes. Middle school, I apologize for that. Middle school kitchen project is, pre-planning construction meeting is set for March twenty-fourth, and mobilization the first week in April. So we're, um, tomorrow, I'm meeting with the team, they're gonna do a walk-around, then we'll have that pre, um, construction meeting on the twenty-fourth, and we're right on track. Again, this is not, we're not delayed, we're right on track, just like the solar project, for, uh, beginning in, in early April. That, that we'll start tearing everything out in, um, respectful and, um, solid way to the school system without disturbing anything. We could still get in there and get a lot done, so that, um, this summer, we'll be able to really hit it hard, and again, our, our hopes and our dreams are, and expectation is that we'll go into the new school year in a new kitchen.
Mr. Tyson, um, it let us know, he said, you know, barring any unforeseen circumstances with the supply chain, I mean, we know that's happening, but, you know, he thinks this is about a four- or five-month project, so it does look like it could happen.
And we still gonna be in the budget of the one-point-two?
Well, that's, i- i- it, the total budget's one-point-six, 'cause you know, you have all those other ancillary, but the budget for him is one set, but then you pay for Mr. Tooton, and you pay for the low voltage and the equipment and stuff, so one-point-six is our budget, we're, we're okay with that, we've got the funding set aside for it, um, and there's some contingency built into it as well.
Every time we go in there and, um, we look at things, i- it gets closer and closer, and I get more and more excited about, um, a, a great move that's gonna make our middle school a beautiful sight when we can move out of there and get rid of the, that section, and open up the, remembering that we're opening up the front of that school to be a real front of a school, w- with some beautiful landscaping and, um, some respect to some historic area right there also.
Yeah. One more thing that we added, it's not listed on the agenda there, but it's, it's your next one, is, you talked about the pond, it's the logos.
Yes, I can't wait to see the logos. Real hard, and I wanna give Rusty, um, a lot of credit on, on our, our logo, he's been able to get in there and work with the principals and each principal, and we're really trying to s- make something that each school has an identity, and so that we could put on the shirts, on our backpack, all, all our stuff that says, here's what we are. When you see this logo, it's gonna really represent McIntosh County Schools. So for right here, we got Todd Grant, they chose the tiger, and what we did was that mimics the tiger paw that's already in the floors of Todd Grant, so it goes right along with, um, the look of the school. Uh, Dr. Pulis has requested that we have a beautiful sign, just like this, um, sign that behind you, that's carved out, we're gonna get one of those. Instead of that cheap, um, plastic sign that is out in front of, um, Todd Grant, you'll see this logo hanging out there, i- in a, a wood, it'll be outdoor material, but it'll be carved out and beautiful that, in, at the entrance, and also, we'll also have one at the X, or the entrance at this end of the school, so you walk it, you drive in, you'll be able to see it, and then obviously, right here, so we'll have two logos there. Here's the middle school. Now, the middle school, we are gonna make a few small adjustments. You might see MCMS and still in that flag instead of just M, and maybe a few tweaks there, but this is the basic design, and we're gonna put a sign. If you remember, the middle school had a huge sign that you put the letters up on the side of the building, and it s- was there for so many years that it has now left a sun stain, um, on the side of the building, so we're gonna make a, have a sign that's round, beautiful, with this logo on, on the side, really, really set that building off and, um, let people know, here we are, we're at McIntosh County Middle School, so I'm excited about that. Again, if you, we've talked about redoing the gym floor at MCA and having it sanded down, because you can't see the lines, so this was the perfect time for us to get our, our logo ready for that, and I can see this at the very middle of our gym floor, just the way it sits, maybe a few little changes, it might say MCA instead of just the MC, M in the middle there, but this is the basic concept that we have for, for the three logos, um, for the school.
Sorry, could you see that?
No. So you'll see that, um, we worked hard, and again, I wanna give Rusty a lot of credit, because he's been on a, a program and tirelessly beating this out.
We're getting closer.
A lot of requests that say, change this, do this, do that. Been a trooper through that. Thank you, Rusty.
Could you talk about COVID this time, please?
Wow, this is one of my, um, most favorite announcements to make. For a long time, we are at zero positive cases, zero close contacts for students or teachers, so ours' numbers are zero, zero, zero for the first time in a long time, so that's big news for us.
Excellent.
However, we can't get complacent, and, uh, see this on the TV, that we had a principals' meeting just the other day, and we had a con- conversation that we cannot stop hand washing, we cannot stop doing the little things that got us through this, um, pandemic and got us to a point where we're here, so even though it, it's great news, um, we're, and we're cautiously optimistic that we're down that path, that we won't let off at this point, that, um, if you're sick and their kids are sick, please keep them at home, um, fever-free for twenty-four hours before they return. We're not gonna let our foot off the gas, not just yet, or ever, and, um, but that's just a great report to be able to say, um, zero, zero, zero.
All right. Anybody have any questions on facility or COVID?
Nope.
Thank you.
Covered it.
All right. Uh, next area, goal area four, quality workforce. Uh, if you recall, we had this long discussion about social security, and, you know, I, I went out to all three of the schools and covered it with their staff and faculty, went through the same presentation, learned an awful lot through this process, and so, uh, I, I would tell you that I had probably as many people who say, you know what, maybe we should be paying social security, as those who say, no, I'd rather go ahead and continue with investing. So the next step of this is, we're gonna send a survey out and get some final numbers. I mean, some of them were caught off guard, did not know, you know, the impact of, of not paying into social security, especially when it comes to that governmental pension offset, so, um, we wanna make sure that everything's out there, we're as transparent as possible, everybody understands it, we'll do a survey, and then we'll look at survey and make a decision of whether or not we keep going with what we have, or maybe we look to do something different, and as you recall, uh, if we decide to do something different, there are two options. Um, a referendum would need to be proved, a long, lengthy process, requires a governor's signature, et cetera, uh, but you can vote outright for all those individuals that are impacted to say yes or no, the entire district is, um, or is not, or you have a second option, which is that Fred does, but Jim doesn't, okay, and then all new employees automatically. So there's, there's some good things that can come from this, uh, and there, the whole issue of the, the elimination provision, as well as that offset, are things that, that we've gotta make sure that we continue, so we're, we're included in our, um, intakes whenever onboarding, whenever we have new employees, so they understand it regardless of whatever result we get out of the survey.
Dr. Pulis, um, when was this adopted, not to pay, back in the seventies?
Fifty years ago, fifties years ago, so, you know, that's the time when the federal government went to the states and said, we want you to get into a section two-eighteen agreement, and tell us whether or not you do or don't. Georgia left it up to the counties, and there are actually quite a few counties that do not pay into social security, um, but at the same point, many of those counties have their own investment programs that they contribute to and provide for, et cetera, and again, as you, if you recall, it was, we can do it better than the federal government, and so there was a, there was a belief that once you did it, you couldn't change it. Well, fact of it is, that section two-eighteen can be amended through that referendum by the people that it impacts, if so desired. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Um, next item up here, strategic waiver extension, and so, uh, as you recall, McIntosh is part of a strategic waiver initiative, and as, towards the end of it, we're supposed to get measured and determine whether or not we're meeting the goals. Well, when COVID hit, it basically impacted on everything, and so when you don't have a CCRPI, it's hard to measure, it's hard to gauge us against that, so the, the state has determined that they will automatically extend us for another two years, provided that the board agrees that we wanna stay a strategic waiver system, and, and in my opinion, there's some great things that come from that, and I would just ask the board to think through that, and then Monday next, that we vote on that, and so that we can send that back up and, and have it approved. All right. Next area, I do have some, um, issues to raise in executive session for personnel. Community engagement, the, the chamber is requesting the use of our facility for a carnival, primarily for the blessing of the Fleet Week, and so, um, Mr. Braun and I have talked about it, as long as we have an indemnification agreement, um, and a lease agreement and how all that works, that, you know, that's for misunderstanding, we've had that happen here before, we've done it. The, the selected area that the chamber would like to use is actually that little triangle area that we just cleared out, um, but it, but, yeah, I just wanna make sure the board was aware of it again, that that's moved, we're gonna do a little bit more work to kinda clean that up and tighten it up a little bit, but that, uh, that's a good location, um, based on how they wanna set it up. Mr. Braun, did I miss anything on that at all, any?
No, I do think we have a brief legal thing in executive session as well.
Okay. Yep. Um, I, just, just so that we are straight, and I'll mention this, we'll get through the executive session, personnel, legal, and cybersecurity are the three areas that I, I'd like us to talk about. Um, and then I, I would ask the board to approve the, it's a formality, the Boys and Girls Club's paying for it, but the labor portion of this and the selection of, of the painter, so that's four thou- forty thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, and that's to, um, Tracy Flanore, he's done some great work for us already, and, um, he's, he's a premier selection of the Boys and Girls Club, it's a formality. We, we're gonna coordinate everything, but the Boys and Girls Club's paying for everything. Uh, Madam Chair, I don't have anything else on here.
Okay.
So again, in an executive session, um, I know we do have some legal issues to talk about, we have personnel issues, and then, um, the cybersecurity.
Okay. Can I have a motion to go to executive session for personnel, legal, and cybersecurity?
Right.
Motion by Mr. Hewitt, second. Ms. McDonald, all those in favor? Okay. Motion carries five-zero. We will be back.
All right.
Low and the dark, pepper fine ball scavenger.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel, cybersecurity, and legal issues. Can I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McGyver, second.
Second.
Mr. Strayles, all those in favor?
Oh.
Okay. Five-zero. All right. Superintendent recommends approval of personnel report as submitted. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Five zero. All right, superintendent recommends approval of personnel report as submitted. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Stragles, second.
Second.
Ms. McDonald, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Four comments. Nobody?
Stay safe.
Ms. Flo Jackson, longtime teacher here in our system, longtime board member. I don't know how many years she served on the board. She has passed away. So keep, keep her family in your prayers and, um, I don't know, how many years she served on the board?
She was here last night. She and Ms. Marjorie Washington, I think it.
Eight years or more?
No, they served long time, long time.
Yeah, if anybody can find those dates, I need, I'll report those to GSBA so we'll try to get those dates together.
I know she taught.
She taught me.
She taught you?
Yep.
Biology.
Biology, that's right.
She was here when, I have to go backwards. Dr. Edgley was here and then, well, Dr. Heck did an interim, then Dr. Edgley, then was it Hannah or?
Hannah.
Then it was Hannah, then it was?
Hannah was before that.
Yeah, Hannah was before that.
Way before that.
Yeah.
But I think she.
Yeah, she's going backwards. She's.
Oh, going backwards. Oh, okay, okay, you're going backwards.
I'm de-sanding here.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Was that, I know it was Dr. Edgley. Dr. Heck, Dr. Edgley.
She was a biology teacher for many, many years.
Years.
And Ms. Fella, was Ms. Fella Brown ever the superintendent?
Yes.
And then Avella, and then Hannah.
We kind of found those dates that she served.
If not, I can probably get them from the registrar's office.
And Ms. Mary Lou's sister-in-law, right?
Yes, uh-huh. That was Mr. Reggie's wife.
I thought if we Google searched her name on, I looked it earlier.
I used to go visit there a lot.
Board members for the state.
And Melody, Melody was with us.
She also served as the cheer sponsor.
Yeah.
She sure did.
That's right.
For years.
She was excellent, I tell you. She was really good.
That's all I have.
Okay.
And Mr. Reggie was sick, I used to go and sit with him.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. We're adjourned.